Stay the course.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the February 11th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. If you wish to speak at tonight's hearing, please sign in at the back of the room. There should be a table back there for you to sign in and a sign-in sheet. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Kinnear.
Here.
Commissioner Zhang.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Bossert.
Here.
Commissioner Mayo.
Here.
Commissioner Colling.
Here.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Excused.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. We have a quorum, and the first alternate, Commissioner Kinnear, will be voting tonight. We have one item on the official agenda, but before we get to that, I need a motion to approve the meeting minutes for January 14th, and then I'll need a second motion to approve the meeting minutes for January 28th. Commissioner Carpenter.
I move to approve the minutes of January 14th Planning Commission meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. Commissioner Tomacek.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for January 28th.
Second. Commissioner.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Zhang, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Passes unanimously. Okay, we have one item on the agenda, 3A Public Hearing and Recommendation of a Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Preliminary Development Plan Amendment for Uplands filing 3, Block 1, Track A, and Block 3. The meeting is hereby, or the hearing is hereby opened, and we have Nathan to present for the city.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nathan Lawrence, Senior Planner with the City's Planning Division. As part of bringing this project to you today, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, and public notices were published in the Westminster window. Notices were mailed, and these posted notices are hereby entered into the public record. Notices for this hearing were mailed to 1,001 property owners and addresses in one HOA within 1,000 feet of the parcel under consideration tonight. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. Here's a map of the Uplands Planning Area C1B and 1C PUD property. The property is located at the southeast corner of Federal Boulevard and West 88th Avenue, as outlined in red here. The proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment proposes to change the designation from commercial mixed use to urban multifamily in order to remove the requirement for commercial space to be included with multifamily development. Section 11521 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 10 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing land use plan amendments. Staff finds that the Comprehensive Plan Amendment generally meets these criteria as is outlined in the agenda memo. There's a site plan from the PDP amendment. The amendment aligns the allowed uses with the proposed comprehensive plan designation change from commercial mixed use to urban multifamily. No access points or density allowances are being changed as a part of this amendment. Again, the only change that is being considered here is the removal of the requirement for commercial space to be provided. Multifamily development without a commercial component would be allowed on the site going forward if approved. Section 11514 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 10 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing rezonings and preliminary development plans. Staff finds that the applicant's PDP amendment generally meets these criteria as is outlined in the agenda memo. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and recommend that City Council approve the Comprehensive Plan and PDP amendments. Staff finds that a recommendation of approval of these applications would meet the city's strategic plan priorities of access to opportunity and economic vitality by facilitating new and diverse housing options. The applicant is with us tonight and has prepared a presentation to share with you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I do have a question for the city. In light of this request, what is the city's position on losing the potential retail and commercial tax revenue that this approval of this request would put on the city?
As part of the analysis that was done along with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, economic development had commented that, that given the amount of vacancy in the immediate area, that this site would be better, and the area would be better served with more additional residential units, and that, you know, probably not marketable as commercial on this site. And so, either way, there are potentially units being added, but due to the fact that it's a requirement under the commercial mixed use, it might prevent those rooftops from being built on the site.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from Commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. And before you start your presentation, I would like to request, for the sake of safety and time, considering the weather conditions, that you consolidate your presentation, possibly if you can.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, good evening. My name is Marcus Pockner, Land Use and Community Outreach Consultant for Uplands. I will be happy to go through that. Thank you again for this opportunity. As Nathan outlined, we are here just focused on C1B and C1C. We'll talk a little bit about that, but those are those two parcels. We'll also show you the context of what's around it, just because many of those applications have moved forward. As we said, over 1,000 people were notified tonight of the hearing. We've also had many neighborhood meetings about this as well. Overall, Uplands update only to show you the context of this area, again seeing C1B and C there. You see that surrounding context and what's getting built. You see overall Uplands, the larger parcel, parcel B. Many of those neighborhoods now approved. If you see a site plan, that's the neighborhood plan that has been approved. And you really see that we have been working through these two particular parcels to really figure out how to bring them forward, and hence tonight's application for both a Comprehensive Plan Amendment and an amendment to the approved PDP. I do want to show you as a focus area what this area is. Previously approved was the Crown Point Expansion, which they brought in just south of us. Now you see 87th, that's that blue line, yes, a waterway, but also a new roadway. Maker, an affordable housing community, just to the northeast or east of this site. And then St. Charles Town Community, which is another affordable housing project in addition to the existing Prospect Point Town Home Community, condo community that is there today. This shows it in a little bit more form, where you also get to see importantly, a three-acre site, a PLD, a park site, that was added there as well, that really creates kind of a complete neighborhood and a true turnaround, almost like a trailhead to the east of this site, where you'll be able to access all the Highland Hills, parks, and trails there to the east of us and down into the valley. I do want to show, this is actually built environment that is getting built today. It actually really helps sets the context. You see the orange kind of sidewalks that are in now on both sides of these parcels. Those are now six-foot local sidewalks, so fully integrated sidewalk path north of the school site expansion, right, and north of these two sites. So this is a true gridded street pattern that we've now created that comes into this site that didn't exist at all before and is now being built right now as we speak. And then you see that off-site trail onto the east. So again, really focusing, as the Chair said, focusing east of Federal here to really talk about that environment. I will also note, we believe the true strength of this application is to make the existing retail in Summit Square and across the street on our main street actually work. We think this leads to more sales tax and better results for the retail, and hence the requests we are making tonight. Just one last look at this, and then we'll go right into the site. It shows you again that built environment, so you can see the site plans, the school site below us, how they have a drop-off area, how it works now. Decatur Street, again, a gridded street, 87th coming in. Our connection to Maker, that affordable housing and the way it's laid out. And then the Eagle Site on the north side, we have heard there's an application, a future pending application there in the county or federal heights, I guess that is, for some type of an auto-related retail site. So some retail on that corner, but really looking again holistically at this whole site. I'm going to have Kaylee run through the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and then I'll close this up here in just a few minutes.
Thank you, Marcus, and good evening, Commissioners. Kaylee Gillespie with North Design. I'll be leading you through our two applications in front of you this evening. The first is an amendment to the 2040 Comp Plan, and the second is an application to an amendment for the approved Uplands Preliminary Development Plan. As Marcus outlined, we're focusing our attention on the portion of the C1 planning area of the Uplands community. This area is outlined in white on the screen in the purple color. Under the current 2040 Comp Plan, this area is designated as commercial mixed use, which recommends multifamily, retail, commercial, office as primary uses. Residential density is permitted up to 36 dwelling units per acre, as long as a minimum commercial FAR of 0.1 is provided along with residential uses. The existing Comp Plan designation and the site location have created challenges in the developing area. With any amount of residential development of this parcel, it is required that there also be 43,780 square feet of commercial as part of the mixed-use development. For comparison, the vacant grocer located just to the south in Summit Square is approximately 50,000 square feet. The extent of this commercial requirement, along with the site's location and limited access, have deterred mixed use and multifamily developers from pursuing the site. These challenges are not just our opinions, but are rooted in what we've seen in our marketing efforts over the last few years. In spring of 2023, we marketed this site to over 5,100 developers and investors. This included mixed use, retail, hospitality, senior housing, multifamily, and medical office developers. Of that group, a total of six multifamily developers showed initial interest, but all moved on due to the extensive commercial requirements tied to the Comp Plan designation. Outside of that effort, one non-solicited gas provider expressed interest. The existing commercial land around Uplands and within the city tells a similar story. There are multiple vacant commercial buildings located within adjacent blocks of the Uplands community. Just to our south, at the corner of 84th and Federal, highlighted in red on the right-hand side of your screen, is the Commercial Development Summit Square we just mentioned, which includes vacancies for a grocer, a smaller in-line lease, and an office building. In fact, the whole of Westminster, there is estimated to be over 1.3 million square feet of vacant retail and office buildings, as noted from the commercial analysis on the city's website, and further supporting our request to remove the commercial requirement from C1B and C1C. We presented the prior findings to City Council at the Concept Review Meeting in June of last year. At that time, our plan did contemplate C1B as commercial and C1C as multifamily. In general, Council noted a preference for additional market-rate multifamily to help create a mixed-income neighborhood, and suggested removing the commercial requirement from both C1B and C1C to promote housing rather than developing subpar commercial or creating additional vacant buildings. By removing the commercial component, encouraging development of the market-rate multifamily housing, we can further support the existing and future commercial areas that are more viable for commercial within Uplands and the greater Westminster. On the left-hand side of the screen is the existing 2040 Comp Plan as it stands today in the magenta color, showing the commercial mixed use. On the right-hand image shows the proposal as urban multifamily in brown. This amendment accomplishes many things. It promotes development of much-needed market-rate housing in a mixed-income neighborhood setting. It reduces the amount of projected traffic by more than 1,300 trips a day, and it provides additional rooftops to further support existing and future retail. It retains similar development standards for land use types and building heights and densities, while activating Federal and the future bus rapid transit. It complies with the goals of the 2040 Comp Plan by locating residential densities along the east side of Federal and providing a balance of land uses that support a diverse economy within a 20-minute neighborhood. The second application we're pursuing is an amendment to the approved Uplands Preliminary Development Plan. The PDP amendment is also needed to remove commercial requirements from C1B and C1C and comply with the proposed Comp Plan amendment. The current approved PDP allows for 300 residential units within C1B and C1C. The requested PDP amendment does not change this allowance or density, but allows this much-needed housing to be built sooner by removing the commercial requirements. Building heights will remain unchanged from the existing PDP, allowing up to five stories. This amendment does not affect infrastructure or park commitments within the original PDP. The infrastructure systems have been designed to meet the original master plan, and those same improvements are being provided within this amendment. With that, I'm going to pass it back to Marcus to walk us through the remaining slides.
Yes, our final three slides here just showing, we believe, both sets of approval criteria will in full compliance with, again, meeting all the conditions, the same height, actually a reduction in traffic trips, and bringing forward the same vision for the site. Again, believe we're completely consistent with the underlying vision for the site. One thing I would just say here in summation, and probably going to the argument here, is it allows this to move forward. Otherwise, we don't believe that there's a proposal on this site in the near or maybe distant term on this site. We have not seen anything move forward. And I think just importantly to reiterate, it is decoupling and removing the commercial that was required on the ground floor across that whole site, and we're just not seeing that at this location despite our best efforts. We believe this actually strengthens the retail argument for Summit Square. We're bringing people in and to our neighbors, some of which that are here that live right across the street. It doesn't change the height, but actually a residential zone district actually gives us better flexibility in some of that built environment at the street and the architecture. So for all those foregoing reasons, we certainly would appreciate your support and look forward to any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick question for you.
Sure.
You mentioned that you think that the build-out would happen more rapidly if this is approved.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we saw a lot of interest from a multifamily standpoint of just market-rate housing, right? So it always came, so the six offers that we had, where they went away when they had to have ground floor retail, and not just a portion across the whole plate, right? And so we saw that, yes, we have had a lot of interest in this site, and we know that will come forward very quickly.
Thank you. Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I do my question, I'll make my normal disclaimer statement. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Westminster Chamber of Commerce, and Uplands is also a member of Westminster Chamber. I have no financial interest in this project. I have not discussed this application with the applicant, and I can judge this application fairly. Secondly, just talking about the market here, is one reason the market is not wanting this retail, I mean, because that eight light at 86th hasn't been built? Because I know access is one of your justifications for this, and it will be a signalized intersection very close to that. It will be. Commissioner, I will say, though, the one thing is, there's the Crown Point Expansion, right? So full movement at 86th. As you know, to the east of this, Decatur will now actually function and connect to this site, right? It doesn't really flow there today. It's a lot of ways disconnected. I think in a lot of ways, though, it's kind of the wrong side of the street, right? It's past the school site, past the main light, then into retail, and then existing housing, the affordable housing from Maker. So it's almost in some ways wedged between that, right? We think, yes, there is better access, but that access probably creates an opportunity for better housing there, right? And to bring it in. And interestingly, just the way this is today, two affordable housing, a mobile home community, a long-standing condo, actually, we need market rate there, right, to complete that neighborhood, and we actually think it brings it forward. So I'm not arguing that you could get some access there, but not to a ground-level floor plate all around that site. That wouldn't work. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Commissioner Kinnear?
Yeah, I guess my primary question, well, I have two questions. One is, I don't understand that you're proposing any changing to parking or parking numbers or any of that at this point. Is that correct?
Yeah, no change at all in that same number of units and the corresponding parking that would go. Obviously, sir, there would be a reduction in the parking per the required for the retail would no longer be required for that.
Right. The issue about the loss of commercial, retail, sales tax, obviously, is something that all cities, when they look at eliminating that, are concerned about. Have you performed any studies about what impact this might have on sales tax loss? Because what you're asking the city to do is effectively permanently remove this land from the opportunity to have retail or commercial in the future.
And I'll just say, and then I'll let Kaylee answer the specifics, the study on it. I think you are correct in the assumption and the question, right? I don't want to say this dismissively at all, but it's also theoretical sales tax at this location. It's not vacant today. It's not built. Yes, it was in the plan. What we have seen, and that was not a minor analysis, right? 5,100 people. We have accessed this site because we saw much more interest in parcel C right away, right, the affordable housing. So we've actually had more interest, and to a person, we have not gotten an offer except. And to a person, we have not gotten an offer except for a gas station, which I now believe is on the north side of Eighty-Eighth.
So is this going to be a common problem across the street in the main part of Uplands?
I think so. I think one thing that we really see there is there is a light there, there is access there, it can be consolidated, and you can go as a destination to this site. This is not fully mixed-use across this. There's a mix of uses, right? But I think this is a much harder site to access today. So we believe, and sir, I would actually say that we think we can really strengthen Summit Square. Just south of this site is where the hard corner is of retail. And working with them, they have well over fifty thousand square feet of vacant retail. I saw there's actually a bazaar now in that old grocery store there, so it's not vacant. I shouldn't say that. But we think we can continue to improve that retail and be additive to the neighborhood. Yeah, sorry, Kaylee.
Just a, pardon me, reiterate what Marcus had mentioned. So the Village Center, since it's a lighted intersection, is a better-rated intersection for commercial and retail purposes, whereas C-1B up in our northern corner really isn't as viable. It's a B-minus or a C when they look at it from that standpoint of if it's viable or not. And then just a reminder, we do think we'll have a lot of interest in the Village Center and having commercial opportunities there, bringing tax base.
Any more questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open the public testimony and ask Jennifer if there's been any emails or voicemails?
No emails, no voicemails. There was a public comment sent to you all in the packet addendum this afternoon, but nothing since then. We have two speakers tonight.
Great. Do you have some speakers signed up?
Sure. First one is Aaron Varner.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Varner. I live at eight-six-eight-five Clay Street in Prospectors Point. I have so for fifteen years. I serve on the Board of Directors of the Prospectors Point Condominium Association. As a Westminster resident and representative for my community, I cannot affirm this application is in the best interest of Westminster or the Prospectors Point community at this time, nor does it represent good city planning, in my view. City staff cite often in their analysis of this request, future nearby commercial. This council or this commission or our council should not consider rezoning based upon future plans that do not exist. The applicant should present its ODP for Parcels A-six and A-eight before this amendment is considered. This applicant has been given exception after exception, and this is just that one giant exception to plans that were previously considered the best for Westminster. The applicant and the city, if voting to recommend, will be punting on first down. They obviously want to sell their land before development costs rise higher and the economy tanks. To make this area more vibrant, we need actual investment on east and west sides. More apartments on the side of a major highway do not make for a vibrant, walkable neighborhood. If recommending, you are jamming one small area with nothing but densely packed multifamily homes. Generally speaking, a neighborhood without conformity has lower property values. Suggesting retail across a major highway that is rarely safe to cross does not connect the vibrant side to the low-income side in a welcoming way. This is not just adding density. This is density on top of recently-approved density, on top of thirty-five-year-old existing density, and creating a wealth gap between east and west sides of Federal. Suggesting Summit Square as a viable commercial retail option for a neighborhood as large as Uplands is not, well, is a joke. And a change from the applicant's earlier rhetoric. The space is mostly full. The former grocery space in Summit Square has already been leased by a specialty ethnic store for the Indian and Persian community. It will not serve as a store for the typical resident of Uplands. Refusing the opportunity to add this needed commercial space means Westminster will continue to lose tax dollars to federal heights, which offers better opportunities for this part of town. Please do not recommend this change. I feel it is bad planning, especially before the applicant provides a true picture of their commercial opportunities on the west side of Federal. Let's not be the applicant's financial planner. Let's do what's best for Westminster. In this case, haste does not benefit Westminster, nor does patience hurt Westminster. Let's see what Uplands becomes before taking away any potential needed mixed-use space away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. John Palmer. I would very much like to echo, I repeat, echo everything the prior gentleman spoke about. Some of this misleading information that they started off with about Summit Square, the gentleman that just spoke, is absolutely true. It's ninety percent full. The people in that neighborhood need retail. After all, the BART line that we're going to get coming up Federal, that's one of the proposed stops right there. Do you not think that the retail businesses on a lower level would survive and add tax revenue if that's a BART stop? They didn't bother to mention that to you folks. And as far as access, you can get in off of Eighty-Eighth, you can get on off of Eighty-Seventh. So this dribble about Eighty-Sixth and the school really doesn't cut it. There are ways into that property for commercial. Additionally, the people in St. Mark's and the people at Maker Housing are going to need small retail places there to help them to survive as we don't have any big, big stores nearby yet. Let's also talk about that they're increasing the number of units that were originally proposed before this commission and the city council years ago for this entire project. We're increasing that now by, what is it, sixty? Above and beyond what was originally approved. If you're adding retail, or if you're adding, excuse me, residential to the bottom floor, that's adding to the number of units they proposed. People in apartments use a whole lot more water than these little commercial businesses. It's proven. So again, now we're dipping into the water budget that they were allowed or originally proposed. They just keep asking and asking and asking. We were here just last month where they were asking for special favors above and beyond. They knew all of this stuff in the beginning when they brought this before you in their PDP and their ODP. Now we're asking for more and more. It makes the city look like a bunch of jackasses that won't stand up to these people because they want to get rich with their big town center or whatever they're calling it on the west side of Federal. Let's support the community on the east side of Federal. Already, we're talking to low-income people. They need little businesses, they need barbers, they need little physical places, physical therapy, they need little doctors. That's all walkable. You make it all residential, there's no walkable for these people to go to. Daycare, there's lots of opportunities there. They haven't explored them all. They're just looking at the bottom-line profit for them and their developers. Let's take the hat off and look at the city. You work for the city, not for these developers. Tax base, it's all about taxes. We don't make any tax or minimal tax on rental properties as compared to retail. Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was all that had signed up to speak.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this application? Seeing none, I will close the public testimony and encourage commissioners to ask questions or make comments at this time. Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would the applicant like to respond to some of the questions that both Mr. Varner and Mr. Palmer brought up, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I think, first of all, I just want to say to the first gentleman who spoke, we appreciate very much the Prospectors Point, I think he said he was on the board, the best interest of that and that neighborhood. I think we believe that a residential walkable footprint is a great addition to the neighborhood, creating that sidewalks and all of those things there. What we are arguing and what the market has shown over and over again here is that just the development doesn't move forward at all. And a large vacant parcel adjacent to that is not the best interest of the neighborhood. This actually creates a building edge, parks open space, makes connections, and completes the neighborhood. And we believe that allows this to happen. The exact word when we talked about this from a concept plan was we didn't want subpar retail to come in. That's what people were worried about, the only retail we would get on this site because of a true floor plate all across the whole site. So respectfully, we would argue this is a much better condition as a neighborhood edge to another residential site. I also would say, just to be sure and reiterate, we are not adding units. We are not adding one single unit. We're allowed three hundred units today. We are building three hundred units. Mr. Palmer is correct that, I guess you could theoretically argue, you could have larger units, right? I think that's fair. It's still the same height and some of those things. But this is not an increase in density. We think it transitions really well to the Crown Point expansion. That was not contemplated when we first went through this analysis of the site. I think, lastly, we are showing a reduction of traffic. We fully understand that we want to benefit the city here in the sales tax. We know how cities work. We think this is what this does. We actually think a vacant land does nothing to benefit property tax or a sales tax. Bringing people in to spend money at those nearby restaurants are great. Yes, we are aware that in the last two months, the Indian bazaar has opened up there. That is happening because of what is coming at Uplands. We are going to strengthen that retail. So again, we're certainly not asking and asking. We are making refinements and we think this is proper planning and hopefully we're reflecting that in the plans.
And, thank you for that. That's, that's very helpful. And the idea that that's ninety percent full, I don't know if that's true or not. Have you had conversations with the shopping center?
Yeah, and I should have said that. Commissioner, we have had ongoing discussions with Summit Square and the family that owns that. As you know, they have long supported this. Maker Housing supports this change. They want to see that instead of probably a standalone retail right in front of them. They think this is much better for their residents and a transition. So again, yes, we are constantly working with Summit Square to really figure out how that works in our future plan to reiterate that.
And then with some of the discussion on the town center, on the A parcels, there's with some of your arguments regarding the residential, I'm sorry, the commercial market right now, that, and obviously, because it seems like it's going to be one of the last, if not the last, portion of this to develop. What is that timeframe? What does that look like? And do you contemplate coming back to us, asking for further reductions in retail on that?
Perfectly fair question, and I actually appreciate the point of that the town center, that I think it's a B-six parcel there, right? Has not moved forward yet. I think everyone would agree, looking at the site, that the last parcel that would form or be planned there would be the town center. There are not the rooftops here today. There simply are not. You do not support the retail, and it's not an opinion, it's a fact of what is at Summit Square today. There's a built environment that does not have that. Do we think that is, Commissioner, a different story in five years, right? When there are families and homes and looking to go to restaurants? Yes, we think that is. We don't think that application is that far away. We are having very active discussions about people interested in that site and in a true mixed-use fashion. I will say, that light at Eighty-Sixth makes tremendous difference to go right to a mixed-use center, right? Not around a school and back into it or to that. That really does become the heart of our site. So we think there's real opportunities. We're in active discussions with a number of tenants and potential developers, restaurants on that site.
Okay, so you, but you're thinking it's going to be, if your crystal ball is accurate, it'll be less than five years, probably?
I think that's right, and I'm turning to see if anybody, if, you know, the ownership, but I think that's what we're seeing. We are the same parties that would be interested in the site before you today would be parties that would be interested in that site. And what they said is, we will absolutely pursue the town center. We will not pursue this site at all. That was just a standalone. There is no pursuit of this site for a mixed-use site.
Got it.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chad Ellington with the Uplands team. Happy to expand on that a little bit. The primary difference between the C parcel and the Village Center, or the Town Center we're calling it tonight, but Village Center is what we've used in our documents, is that the Village Center is meant to be neighborhood commercial and it is master-planned with the overall large parcel at Uplands. As you see from the zoning, we have commercial requirements there. We have denser product that's around that Village Center area. And we believe, because it's not vertically integrated into an apartment building, which is what the current requirement is on Parcel C, that we can do small neighborhood commercial along the street like you would see on Kaler Street or Pearl Street or walkable small commercial in the neighborhood. And there will be a safe crossing for folks that are east of Federal to get across. So we're going to have, once the rooftops are there, which is what Marcus was saying, we'll have more new folks in the neighborhood that'll be able to use these in addition to the existing residents. And we're confident we'll have a lot more interest in the Village Center being mixed in the community, mixed commercial, not vertically-integrated commercial that's on the ground floor of an apartment building. On the C parcel, if this change doesn't go ahead, what it effectively does is it raises the cost of the apartments, if that makes sense. So there's, if there's not a viable commercial use or a tenant that's going to rent those spaces for, there's a high cost of construction, if they don't pay the rent to offset that, it just adds to the cost of housing, which is exactly what we, when we met with city council in our study session, exactly the point we made, which is multifamily developers will just build this commercial, it'll remain largely vacant, we'll have, we could get some folks in there to pay a little bit of rent, but it's not going to be that viable. And so what it does is it just increases the rent for market-rate apartments. So that's why we believe that focusing it in the Village Center is the right place for additional commercial as well as revibrating, reinvigorating the existing vacant or underutilized commercial that's all along up and down Federal.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Kinnear?
Thanks. I have just a quick follow-up question on that. Doing lawyer math, it seems like if we have, the buildings are going to be the same size as they were, the footprint's going to be the same size, the height is going to be the same size, we're getting rid of commercial retail. Each unit then is going to have to be larger and therefore the prices will go up?
Not in reality.
Okay, the math wasn't working for me.
If you're doing math and I was a math teacher, then I would have to do lawyering and nobody would like that. So I think that the best way to think about this is, we still want to preserve the flexibility for height. What probably happens is, a market-rate apartment building is not five stories and it's not sixty-five feet tall. It will probably be shorter. And I think we just need to get this approval, go back to the market, and find out exactly what the most efficient way to build on this site is. The likelihood, when you go to five stories, you go to elevator serve, you go to different construction types, so it raises the cost. And so, and then the cost of the apartments, you can only get so much rent for apartments. So they are very keen on keeping their unit sizes and bedroom count mixes very prescriptive. And so it's not going to, we're not going to fill the retail space and have the exact same building envelope with an apartment building that doesn't have a ground-floor commercial requirement. If we didn't make this change, we would, if and when someday someone else builds this way down the road and they put retail on the first floor, those buildings are going to be that much higher. So I think it's still four stories of residential. It's just not, the ground floor is not commercial.
And for our discussion, just a comment, I guess, my overall sense, I obviously have a concern about the loss of commercial. Whenever you lose commercial and retail, you have a loss of tax revenue opportunity, and it's permanent, more or less. We don't get that land back. I do trust our city experts, the planning staff, the economic development staff to do these studies. I do think that we need to be careful that we're not frogs in the pot, though, and incrementally take away bits and bits of land that can have an opportunity. take away bits and bits of land that can have an opportunity to generate sales tax revenue and other revenue for the city. But trusting that our economic development and planning folks have analyzed that, I would say that will be a concern for me going forward. And I would expect the onus is on the developer to demonstrate that it's not going to have a negative impact in the future going forward. And I would expect a more, a little bit more of a study on that impact, for my purpose anyway.
If there are no other questions or comments, I'd like to get a motion on the table here. A motion on this application. Someone feeling brave tonight? Commissioner Mayo?
I move that the Planning Commission recommend city council approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Preliminary Development Plan Amendment for Uplands filing three, block one, tract A, and block three, planning area C1.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Carpenter has seconded. Any comments? I will say right off that I'm sorry to see the commercial part of this go away, but the applicant has made a good argument and the city does not seem worried about the loss of tax revenue. And it's better to get these built than to have an empty lot, so I am going to support Any other comments?
Yeah.
Commissioner Mayo?
I too am concerned about the loss of the retail, but I tend to agree that with this development, the way it is, without the commercial, bringing in those, you know, more of a critical mass will make the other retail around there more viable. So I'll be supporting it.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I ditto my fellow commissioners there and I will say, I'm looking forward to seeing the Village Center construction over there. I think that will be, that, I think that's the opportunity. So, and my request is not to come back with a bunch of changes on that when that parcel comes along. Regarding this parcel, I think it does make sense for it to be residential, considering we've got the Crown Point expansion, we've got the Maker property, the St. Charlestown. It makes a lot of sense for it to be residential in there, so I'll be a support.
Commissioner John?
Although I echo the same point as my colleagues, I do want to take the time and note, for almost like 30 years, that property has been sitting vacant. And no developer has come forth outside of this group to propose an alternative to build on that site. But I also know, you know, there's sales tax involved in this and to note what my colleagues have noted of the impact study going forward and keeping an eye on that on our end. And I am excited for the mixed-use development site that will potentially go there. And so I'm going to just echo my support for that.
No more comments? I'd like to go ahead and call the question. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Kinnear?
Yes.
Commissioner John?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Bochert?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Colling?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your presentation and thank you, city staff, for your presentation. Do we have any old business on the agenda? All right? Do we know when our next meeting will be?
Tentatively, March 25th.
Okay, thank you. March 25th. All right, seeing no other business on the agenda, I will announce this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.